All right, anything else with regards to the budget? All right. We moved to item number eight, which is an advertised public hearing on the secondary road six-year plan. We do this every year and we have with us folks from Virginia Department of Transportation today to explain the situation and where we stand and how the six-year plan is done. And I guess we'll let them speak during the public hearing as well. So at this time, we will open the public hearing for the secondary road six-year plan for Scott County.
May I come speak?
You have to wait for the [inaudible 00:00:11].
Either way, yeah, let's let them go ahead and you sit right here, Darrell, and let them, and then we'll certainly give you opportunity. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to be with you this morning. I'm Alan Sumter. I'm the President's Administrator for VDOT's Wideset Emergency and [inaudible 00:00:18]. And I'm not sure what music you might have for us, but it's good to be here. I would like to just kind of just go over a couple of things. Jackie Christian, our assistant, has been working very hard on the plan. He works with most of you more than I do, and he's going to get up and go over some things, but I just want to kind of speak a little bit in general terms. We currently have a program that's evolved in the six-year plan now on the secondary system where pretty much our emphasis is on gravel roads. That's where the money is being applied to. We've seen a lot of changes. Sure, most of you have heard about the Smart Scale program that's come that was the House Bill Two before they changed the name of it. And in the olden days, we used to have in the, for the public hearings in the road project six-year plan, we could work on a hard surface road, maybe realign it. We would put money in to set aside for several years. And then we also had a portion of it that was unpaid. As things are now, the improvements and things that are done on the hard surface roads, they have to be submitted through the Smart Scale program, just like submitting a section of Route 72, 58, 23. They all go into evaluation for that same type of thing. So really, what we come now in the secondary program here is, as I've said, an emphasis on gravel roads. We have the telefeed monies that are in there, but we have a specific money that is applied just for the gravel roads. Now, the way that we've been trying to do that and try to help you, Scott County, I think, has like the second largest amount of gravel roads in the entire state. And so we've been seeing a pretty good little allocation based on what they've been handing out come here in the last couple of years to Scott County. And Sheriff Puckins spoke earlier. He was talking about the heritage roads, as he called them, but I think really what he was referring to is what we call the rural rustic road program. And those are the roads that essentially allow us to build the roads pretty much on the alignment that they are, just make minor improvements, almost somewhat like a pave and place type program. And so with that, we've been, we've been working, I think we, last year, we added almost about eight roads to the program, six last year. And the approach that we were taking with those is to try to do those as a state force, higher equipment type project. And by the code of Virginia, anything that's under $600,000, we can do in that program as a project. So we're gearing those projects toward that, that we can get those in there, get those funded, and get them built a little quicker and cheaper. And so we've been going down the list. I feel like we made pretty good progress last year. We'll continue to do that. There's a lot of roads that are on down the list. We just hope to keep going right on down those, based on your priority list, and try to get as much accomplished as we possibly can. That pretty much highlights the process that's there. The other thing that I want to mention while I'm here is that there is also an emphasis on other means of accomplishing things that are out there applying, and you have to apply through the Smart Scale program. We've worked, we worked with Kathy when she was here, with Ms. Starnes. We worked back a little earlier in the year trying to get some of the applications it's in. Enhancement type program things, they call those TAP programs now, that things like that you want to do, sidewalk improvement somewhere or something like that, that's kind of related to the transportation system that's there, those types of grants that are out there, that they come up at different times. And then one, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to speak now. I saw it on down in the agenda somewhat is on the revenue sharing program. A lot of emphasis now, if, basically if anything outside the unpaid road program that a county wants to accomplish, the revenue sharing program is probably going to be one of the better ways of trying to do that. And I know every county is like any government entity right now, kind of limited in funds and so forth like that, and have their challenges. But throughout the state, the revenue sharing program is being looked to as being a means of coming up with the funds to get the VDOT match in order to do other types of improvements. They have different tiers of those programs that have been done. They're hoping to expand that as they go forward. This past year is pretty much funds, projects that were already funded. Now, one that was approved off Scott County last year, received approval with, is the Slant Bridge. And we're right upon the timeframe that, I believe, $62,500 that the match needs to be made for that in order for that project to be able to move forward.
That's the one that's actually on the agenda?
Yes. And that match needs to, technically needs to be paid like by the first of July. And it can be paid after that, but after that date, the state looks to try to see what monies they can gather by counties that have not made their match and collect those back up for reallocation. And they call it allocating it from the project. And after July the first, the next one around the risk of possibly being de-allocated by July of 2018. So I'm not coming to you and saying that it will, but they look very hard at those types of things after the timeframe is passed that the county has the limit to make its match.
And how will that, will that affect us going forward if we try to get revenue sharing funds again if we do not do this one?
Well, every project is going to stand on its own, but again, everyone is waited and they go through the evaluation. I don't feel like you would be penalized, you know, say, well, they didn't meet their match last time. I don't think that that would happen. However, you have to realize, and you know, you have all these applicants that come in, all these other counties that are put in there, and you only have so much money there, and then they're evaluated and waited. It's kind of like, right now, you know you have that in the pocket, and then it becomes an unknown after, if it's de-allocated. You don't know if you'll get approved back or maybe something that scores higher on their list that gets the funding. And, you know, you may score this high this time to got the funding, but the next time you may score down here on the list. So I just wanted to pass that along to you as well. Do you have any questions of me about that process as I've explained? If not, I'm going to let Jackie come up and go over the list of the projects that are in the plan. I just, it's, you know, we work with it every day. It's kind of like, you know, you go to the doctor's office. I sit in the doctor's office and he sits there and he tells me all these different things and all this and explains, and I'm sitting there like, how and what are you telling me? But he understands, well, he's talking about, he understands, he explains it every day too. That's what his background is, so. All good?
Comments, questions? Thank you, Mr. Sumter.
I'm going to take that then, and I fear they'll be confused. I'm going to let Jackie then go over the list.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see you all again. As Mr. Sumter said, we have been working on the six-year plan for Scott County. And I think I'll give you tomorrow, there'll be a copy of that. What I'd like to do is probably just start at the top and go through each project, kind of give you a little update on them. The first project we have on the plan was Route 653, Hunter's Valley West. That job has been completed. The second project we had on the list was Route 653, also Hunter's Valley 653. We like one section on that having a little bit of pavement, and that job will be completed. The next project we have on the list is Route 630, Sloontown Road. We're about halfway completed with the project, and due to the recent storm damage, as Mr. Sumter mentioned, we, this work is performed by our hard equipment crews. So we had to pull our crews from that construction project in order to work on some of the slides and road closures that we have throughout the county at this time. But as soon as those completed, we plan to go back to Sloontown and hopefully that project will be completed by this fall. The next project on the list is Route 704, Carter's Valley Road. That project will be moving to it as soon as we complete Sloontown Road. So we're hoping that we can have that one completed by early winter of this year. The next project we have on the list is Route 635, Ivy Valley Road. We have been able to complete the above projects under budget. And by completing those projects under budget, we can take the funds from those projects and move them. We use, ask for permission from the board to transfer those funds from one project to another. So what we're doing, when we complete one, all the bills come in, we have surplus funding, we move it to advance the other projects. So by moving some of those funds, and with the existing funding that comes in this year, Ivy Valley Road, we have submitted a new environmental review on that road, and as soon as that review is complete, we'll be able to start on that project also. Route 897, which is Big Ridge Road, that's located off of Sloontown. We've had a lot of comments, you're in the area, why can't you go ahead and build this road? And it's, it does make common sense, but we have a list that we go by that the board selected, and we'll, we stay with the list as accurate as we can. That way, we don't step ahead or get behind. That one also is going to be able to receive some transfer of funding. It may be springtime on that road. It's, won't require a whole lot of work done, it's drainage and some surface treatment. The next project we have on the list is Oda Valley. That project is scheduled to go in July of 2018. Then we go back to Route 653, Hunter's Valley East. We've got the project set there. That project is set for July of 2019. And I'd also like to keep you in mind that as those funds become available from the transfer of other projects, these may be, the dates may be moved up on to advance. The next project on we have will be Copper Creek, Route 627. We have Route 670, Hattie and Frame Road. Route 760, Cumberland Town Road. Route 702, Sherwood Forest Lane. Route 703, Robin Hood Lane was added to the plan this year. And I would also like to comment on the sheriff. He did mention, you know, the heritage road. And through the board, we really just have one list now, and our list is all rural rustic roads. You know, each time I come to you and ask you for a resolution to determine, it's been 100% to. So what we're looking at on our six-year plan is basically all unpaid roads at this time, and they all will be rural rustic projects. And it just, you know, advances the projects, gets people out of dust and off the ground.
So pretty much what you're saying, if we didn't have the rural rustic money, very little will be being constructed as far as tarred gravel?
Well, I'll give you one example. Route 653, Hunter's Valley, throws an estimate of $1.3 million on that project. And it would have taken us four, five more years because the funds coming in.
Yeah.
So by the board electing to do a rural rustic project, we completed it for $300 and some thousand dollars.
Okay.
Jackie, could you give them the total overall, the entire dollar value of the budget, please?
I think we've got $40 million. The total plan for the six years would be $4.7 million. This year for 2018, we had $684,669. But for the total six years, we're looking at $4.7 million.
Now, the ones you just covered are the ones that went over what? This year?
The, that's the ones that are actually on the plan, are planned as it stands now.
It's over a six-year construction period?
Yes.
That's not, all of them will not be built this, this year?
Okay, the list I showed you there earlier was on a different list that was 34 or maybe 34.
Yes. The list Marshall was picking about is back in 2010, the board elected to, there was numerous projects on this plan. And to come up with a realistic plan, the board elected to remove all those off and start over, basically in the order at which they were removed off. And we've, we've got the first page knocked off, starting on the second. So it's a, it's a big progress that we've been making so far.
How much time would you anticipate on the second page?
It just, well, we was able to add one this year, six last year.
So kind of a snail pace, right?
It's, well, it's, it's moving at a pace that we, you know, we've not seen in several years due to the increase in funding for unpaid roads. And also by being good stewards with the funding and building the roads, it's, it's going well.
Hopefully, we see that number change from number two of unpaid roads go up some more.
Well, that, you know, we have seen increase in funding in the last three years in our unpaid road money, and it's been real good.
We had some zero years.
Yes.
Several, so this is a huge increase, believe me.
Well, Smart Scale added some money back in to when there was none before. When it was coming through the traditional formula, it added some money back. And so really what we saw when we added those six roads, we saw the benefit of that bump coming back in, of that funding being projected. What, the reason now is going to be like one or two at a time is because as we go out, we're going to see like that, typically that $600,000 like he's talking about added one year, and then the next year, another $600 and some thousand, another, unless they bump us and say, okay, well, next year you're getting $2 million or something like that. So basically whatever they add to us, you can about divide by about $600,000, and that's how many projects we'll get to add on the out years.
I don't know if y'all get any positive feedback, but I sure have on the 653, Hunter's Valley West, getting that done. And a lot of people have commented about how quickly you got it done, and not too much inconvenience, people living there, so they've done a good job on that. Appreciate y'all getting like that quick. I did have a question, I'm dealing with this. I talked to you about Route 72, between Duck Gann and Fort Blackmore. What slide is there? Do you have any anticipated time when we start constructing, trying to fix that horse lid early at the red light setting now? Do you know when you might get that?
We're finishing, hopefully today, we're doing the pavement on Route 71, because we have finished. We had basically the same thing there at Downwind Road. And as soon as that's complete, crews will be moving over to 65.
Two things, Jackie. One, positive feedback on the AP Carter Highway under that long time coming, being resurfaced, and a lot of positive feedback on that. The other one is on West Carter Valley, where we had this speed study done there a year or two ago. And, you know, I think the 45 was supposed to change to 40, I think is what our conversation was, but I haven't saw that in place, and it's taken some time to.
That has been progressed.
Okay, so just.
Yes.
I played the last correspondence where we were just waiting on the signs to come in.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And also, I got a positive comment too about that, the pavement did over in Hilton area, AP Carter Highway, I think, but I got a phone call yesterday, and so I told them to have a speed today, and I'll tell you all, because they don't, maybe y'all don't hear it, but we do, and it's very positive, and they really appreciate y'all getting on that and doing it.
We appreciate their patience because we planned for three years to do that and replace all the drainage before we, that way we won't be dead to pavement for different miles.
Jackie, I got a couple of things. We get a lot of calls in about, you know, road repairs and things. Once a road is tarred and gravelled, like you're talking about doing, what kind of maintenance schedule is given to those roads, and where does that funding come from?
It comes from our regular maintenance funding, it's just our basic funding.
So if people have potholes or issues with those roads, they can use that report a road problem on the VDOT website?
Yes, sure. Or they can call our office if they want.
Okay. Could you explain a little bit the process once someone puts that work order in on to report a road problem, so that people might know what to expect when they do that?
They, well, once a work order is submitted by an individual or, you know, the superintendent's got 48 hours to go out and review that and make a plan of action. That doesn't mean that he'll be able to complete it in 48 hours, but it may be something he had worked into his work schedule, but they do review it and reply back to the one that made the request.
So someone makes a request, should get a reply within 48 hours or so?
It should, yes.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
I emailed Jackie just a few recently, and I get a response real quick from him. And one thing too, there on the east side of the VDOT station, Fort Blackmore, had that huge rainy day, early on 27. And that rain there hits, I looked at it when the water was down, it was late, I went through that night, we drove through two foot of water up there. And that, that drain has stopped up, and so those houses are almost flooded up in that hollow, more hollow road. And so anyway, really concerned right now.
Take orders with all followers on?
I believe probably like a long boom excavator or something can reach it, and it's just debris that's gathered, that tile that goes under the road and the railroad. And so I stopped to look at it, it really needs to be cleaned out really bad. If you have no bigger rain event like that, it almost got through houses this time. So anyway, if you get a chance to look at it and see what they can do.
The, the thing with the worker, though, I will like to add to that, though, is that during times of like, like when we've had these storms that come in, like you're talking about, we may have, like Fort Blackmore, Patinsville, they may get 20 or 25 work orders come in, about trees down, or the pipes stopped up or something, that's like that. And it's a little overwhelming, so we generally know that they're out there, and we work on trying to make a plans there, but we, in those types of cases, it may be a little longer than 48 hours for to get notified back under extreme. Same thing like will happen with, with, during snow removal types times, we may get, you know, an area may get 50, 50 work orders come in saying their road needs to be plowed when we're actively out plowing them according to our priorities. So you kind of got to put that into perspective a little bit with the work order system that look at, kind of things being done.
Jackie, I've got one complaint, that's our own Fowler's Branch, you know, where y'all do the ditching and so forth. Upwards, steeper, and it gets real washed, boardy, and the complaint is, you know, rock in the ditch may have to be busted up or something. What happens is it's not, rock has not gotten out of there, then gravel just washes in, up to that rock, and then flows over top of that and goes into the road, tunnels out into the road. That's a major complaint through there.
All right. Check that.
The only thing, on 72, there, a piece back towards Duck Gann, where they put the grain tile in, had a lot of people complaining about, David Mann especially says, I can't come down to there with a trailer and farm produce, doing about two miles an hour, he said people blowing their horns and what have you. He just wanted to see if they could get some of those where they put grain tile in, just kind of like smooth them, like, you know what?
One comment, I don't know how the sheriff will look at this, but you know, we've talked about this before, Nottingham, through that straight stretch upon Highway 58, when he got restripped, they boo-booed on that. They got a double, they got solids on the side, and they got dotted in the middle. So what happened? Did you see somebody passing down through a straight, a straight stretch there, Sheriff?
I don't know the situation, I'd have to look there.
Okay.
When they restripped that area, the contractor actually went over the skips and put doubles in. And to re-correct that, it has to be milled, and that's an expense. Once the contractor was gone, we're kind of in a limbo right now with that one, but as long as they didn't put the skips in a curve, that's the main thing, with the pace in a curve.
Jackie, on that right, then we had it right two full seven, five inches and less than that. It was a flash flood, a cloud burst, whatever, but that's how bad it was there. It has a huge amount of water in a short period of time, and that's why, that's rarely that happened, you know, but it did happen, and, but that was a lot of rain. Set about 40 minutes, right that much. So it's nothing, I don't know what you could done off the drain, but handled it even if it happened then, partially stopped up.
We can check about the plane. Any other questions?
All right, anything else? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it, and we appreciate the ongoing dialogue during the month, during the months on certain issues that come up in time to time, and the board members get with you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Sumter.
Thank you, Dave. I'm Darrell Darrell, I live on 670, and I've been waiting 50 years to get that road fixed, being pushed back. 2004, they had on the agenda, 2007, pushed back. And I can't wait another 50 years for another pushback. But Jack, happy to meet you, sir. Glad to see you. You're good, talk with my name on the back, if you'd like to call me or talk to me, anything, that'd be fine. I like the short tea. And I went around and asked everybody that did on this road, signed it. I can give y'all a copy if it's all right.
Darrell, you got one?
What was the name of the road against there?
I think 670, Hattie and Frame Road.
It's on the list.
And it was one page from the bad fix towards the green store. Finally got that done in 95, or 94, summer of 2009. And then they said they were going to put the 670 on the six-year plan 2004. So that's great, we can wait, no problem, we've got things to do. Then it switched back to 2007, but it ain't done yet. And there's no, there's no trees, no rocks, no houses, hardly no fence, no pipe, that's about the only fence on that road. He's the only one that never moved his fence, never built his fence. He said, I'm not moving my fence, it's a quickie, but that's smart. I've got two driveway, I think that's an hour or two, two bridge camps. I've got two driveways, I think that's an hour or two, two, three kilometers from one of my driveways, no big deal. And there's a church that ended up, it's five thousand, five hundred thirty-five feet from one end to the other.
I've been there, I know exactly where you're talking about.
And had a big convention last year, the church, hundreds of people there, there were some, either people come to our church in Tennessee, over the county, their families and everything. I had more time, I guess, than I had the name of the people come to church there, and most funerals, you never know about funerals, they'll tell them go, tell them where to go, but that's it. And I just wanted to let you show you that we've been waiting patiently, and I know I can't wait another fifty years, or thirty years, however you like. Dave's been there, Jack's been there, Darrell knows about it, Ted's been there, easily I'd like to look at it, it's fine. School buses going over it, it's not a dead-end road, it's a dead-end road, it's all right, the pavement, the pavement, the driveway. This is a through traffic, and it's fixed, but all I've been getting is a load of rocks, and I, for my, for my time, I'd like to see a pavement, or fixed better for my kids, but people coming up. And it would improve taxes, like you say, we need to pay taxes, I've been paying taxes since seventy-five on the farm and everything, I ain't got that. That's all right, I'm not complaining, but I appreciate, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, you come on up. I'm gonna let Mr. Christian go ahead and comment on that road.
I just want to let Mr. Doherty know that it is on the existing plan, and funding for that is in twenty, twenty twenty, however, with the way projects have been advanced, there's possibility that could be moved up some, but we have reviewed it and we've got estimates on it, and it is, it is a need, however, we're going by the list that we were given, and you know, that's, that's where it falls in, but it is on the existing plan at this time.
All right, thank you, sir.
I just want to know, pushback?
Yeah.
We've been, we've been hoping right up in the list.
All right, let me take them in order, Mr. Hamilton, go ahead.
I may go earlier.
That's okay.
My name's Larry Cleland, I come from Rutherford Chapel, talked to Mr. Mann last night, I talked to Mr. Tipton different times, what I can attest was, I know Slontown Road, I've been over in there, I've seen a lot of churches as Mr. Tipton has, we've, we've been all over the country, seen log gravel roads, seen roads turn to gra, wagon tracks sometimes going to churches, so I understand what the gentleman was saying about the church. I was wanting to ask for some consideration of what I heard him say, and please sir, don't take this offensively and don't even, I heard him say there weren't many houses on that road, well, from, on seven oh four, I was gonna ask for some reconsideration, before Slontown, that you get seven oh four, we've waited, they promised us in ninety-one they'd pave it, they moved us off the list because of a signature, there's been different times I've talked to the governor, I've talked to your predecessor over at VDOT, I've talked to different people on this board, and we keep getting pushed back, I understand you say you're gonna do it before the end of the year, but what I hear, what I hear in my mind, I know how business is, is you start on Slontown Road, you get tied up there and a lot of money gets spent, and then we get pushed back.
That won't happen.
You don't, you, you're saying that won't happen?
I'm gonna tell you today that it'll be done this far.
It'll be done this far, I like it.
What road was that?
He called me our last night about that, and I told him to come here today, I'm glad you came, you heard him straight from the horse.
I heard you straight from the man.
So I told him to be here, we'd have this today, and so thank you for coming and speaking.
Since we've got you two together, we'd like to remove ourselves from being between you there, that agreement y'all made is just with you.
Wake up.
No, you know, the freeing up of funding has helped a lot of this, and I know Mr. Doherty on that, Addington Frame Road, has lived through budget cuts and zero money and all that stuff, and it has, it has done a lot, but there is some money being freed up and, and thankfully, these counties that have so many miles, we've got nearly three hundred miles gravel roads in this county.
I was, did a lot of work for VDOT, put a lot of phones in, put a lot of TVs in, put a lot of computers in, with the company call a lot of our communication, if they say they're gonna do it, they'll do it.
All right, great, thank you. Mr. Hamilton?
I've had phone problems, so he's going to back with us.
Yes, sir.
I won't try to walk up where it is, but I'm bad hill.
That's okay.
I don't have no map, but I know they done have one and it's had it several years, right there on the wall, and that's been eight, seventeen or eighteen years, I guess, since that started, and it does have a bit, a big impact on our county, on account of the schools, school property, and we got homes over in there that this last flood we had, they had to walk out there and come park over on the, next to the dungeons in order to get out. And we've been promised that for three, six year terms, and I'm wondering when that term is gonna ever come up.
That'd be filled with plant roads.
And it does, it starts at Moxing Gap, it's supposed to go through with the school, you know, where you can get over the school properties and that stuff, and he was in as supervisor when this thing took plan, and we've heard all kinds of ornaments and all kinds of stuff come up, why they can't do it, and how come that field to be over our sports complex, we was promised it was coming through there right then, and the property was for sale, we've, I've heard all kinds of lies and everything else about it, but they come up then and they had to take advantage of it then in order to get that zone, called it sticks and it'd be for sale. It's on the land Scott County that was actually close enough to hip our school, and we've been told several different times it's come through there with it, it don't only hip them, it hipped our whole county, because when our schools don't come up to standard with the schools in our own area around here somewhere, it hurts us, and it hurts and causes our young people to have to leave, and when they laid that road out, we lost about seventy or eighty residents that was paying taxes, we lost three or four apartment buildings over there, we lost four or five homes, we lost another business out here, and we lost all of them when they give us that plan, and it seemed like they're the ones that give it to us, I know at one time it was up to, in about four or five hours of getting the money to lay that road out, pay for that road, then they changed their mind, and you guys may know about that too, because I, I know, I know, but where the place I was at when it was supposed to happen. And what's the hold in that project though, is what I'd like to find out.
That'd be the bypass that was originally.
The one on this map right here, it's been put out for, what, eighteen years, I guess?
Well, the, as I mentioned earlier, the entire process has changed for the way that projects are funded, such as Route twenty-three, fifty-eights, all the big projects, they're competing statewide now for money. The, the bypass project went to an estimate of somewhere around eighty-five million dollars, and as there was zero monies in the, like we've talked about in the secondary system, there's very few monies in the primary system as well. That process has changed, however, all these have kind of gone into like a cost benefit type ratio, and they're scored, and the bypass project is, has not scored at a level for it to be funded compared to some of the other projects. The Bristol District now, and its district grant for the types of projects that like the bypass, this past six-year plan, we received right around thirty million dollars for the entire twelve county Bristol District, so that's not gonna fund an eighty-five million dollar project. And so, one of the things also that we've looked to for the future for that project is that we come up with a new type of alignment to come in, pass where our shop was at Moxing Gap, and wrap it around and bring it back around and tie it back in on to seventy-one.
Right.
This board is actually is, has endorsed that project. Still, that project has been estimated about fifty-five million dollars. So, these projects, the best advice that I have now is these projects is like for the counties and for Lenoisco and the area to keep submitting these projects and get them evaluated and see how they score, and if funding increases, much like what we saw has happened in the secondary system, we may see more, enough money come to do that type of project. But there's, there's several in the entire district that are up there with the funds like that, and the funds just haven't been available to do them. It's just kind of, it's been a, been a money issue.
There's not many things that are more important than our schools and our school projects.
I understand.
And if we don't have our education center that we should have, we lose residents in our county, because people moving out of here don't count that, I, I know a step of people moved and they wonder how come grades gets big and Churchill and all them, it's the difference in our management of our state and of our county.
So, all of them are...
We need to have it to care of.
All of them are tied together, we, I think, in the, in submissions for the Bristol District, to ask for funding in the twelve counties, to seek that thirty-some million dollars there, I think there was like four hundred and two million dollars of requests that were made just in the Bristol District alone this past year. So, it's, it's...
But do you think there's anything in your future to get it done, or is it just gonna sit there?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure, I can't really, I can't really tell you, I mean, it's, it's kind of open, you know, as to how the funding comes and how it, you know, it scores in the future projects and comes up in the ranking as to whether or not it gets done or not. It's, I, I really can't tell you.
But you have to, really, that is one of the important things for, for Gate City and the surrounding areas around here.
I understand, yes.
And it looks like it should be even thought about or something in the near future, because we, we went through this for, started about eighteen years ago, the money was supposed to be appropriated in, appropriated in, when they, about eighteen years ago.
I understand, yes.
And they just brought it over and dropped it, that's when them maps was dropped up, and that's a long time to have to put something off, eighteen years.
We've got, we've got a lot of projects that are in the, the same, same boat as that throughout, really, the entire state. So the new program's trying to evaluate which projects can be of the most benefit for what money there is and try to move them along. Not that the projects aren't valid, certainly they are a good, a valid project, the, the project is a good, valid project and needed because if the road ever gets blocked there at the overpass, then we're kind of, we're kind of locked there.
What are you gonna do for that after that? It's, call it them people, sit over and have a helicopter come in and get them, how they won't get out of that.
We have to try to get people deeper and hope the railroad can do something real quick, yes, but, but I understand where you're coming from, it's just several issues there with it that's kind of kept it from happening, but I hope it will, I hope it will sometime.
Yeah, it could, I don't have much hope.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
That's all right, everyone up? I'm Bobby Marshall from Nicholsville, and I've stood here many times, and a few times I know been pretty out of rate, as some of you can well remember. Air gravel roads in the county, not, took no horns or whatnot, but I guess I understand the six-year plan and the system with the highway department as well or better than anyone here except these two gentlemen. If you'll allow me just a minute to, to talk about that, we've heard here today about my road has been on schedule and it was postponed, it was changed, it was put off, as some of you board members know, my first appearance before it was in two thousand and four, I had heard all my life of how VDOT was doing this and how they were doing that, there was, my brother was on the list and it was taken off and it was moved and it was changed. When I came back here, I left the county for thirty-five years, when I came back, the first thing I did was went to VDOT, and I said, I want a copy of your six-year plan for the past ten years, I wanna see what's going on. I was told by VDOT officials at that time, it wasn't available. I said, well, you can give it to me or I'll go to the county administrator's office, I can get it to the Freedom of Information Act. I came to the administrator's office, I personally paid to have them research and run me copies of the ten-year plan, and I spent days studying those plans. And since nineteen ninety-four, I don't know what happened prior to that, but since nineteen ninety-four, I can assure you, there has not been one road that was ever put on a six-year plan that was altered, that has not come up through the ladder as it should come, one step at a time, and this stuff of that, VDOT putting it on, taking it off, since nineteen ninety-four, that has not happened. Jack mentioned the six-year plan in two thousand and ten, when I came back here in two thousand and four, there was forty or forty-one projects on the six-year plan. Folks, that's just as unrealistic as a fish out of water. Even in the good times, you couldn't get that many projects done, and VDOT in two thousand and ten said, hey, we need to have something realistic. When I came back here, Odellada Lane, it's on the list now, it was number nineteen on the list to be paved, now we are on the, I thought it was seventeen, eighteen year schedule, Jack said it's on eighteen, nineteen, but anyway, getting sidetracked. I don't know what, what they did in two thousand and ten, as Jack said, they took that six-year plan we had, set it aside, and started with something that was realistic, we were several years with one or two roads on this plan, y'all remember? Well, the, the plan, the roads that's coming back on the six-year plan now, it's the same list that the board of supervisors had approved prior to, to oh four, since oh four, there has not been one new project added to the six-year plan. Six-year plan that's adding that is, correct me if I'm wrong. The list that had already been approved by the board supervisors is coming up, we're going through the remainder of that list now, and to, I would be one of the first persons to get upset if they, if the board approved another road to go on ahead of the ones that's already on the list, that's already been approved. What people are, when they say that my road has been taken off or it's been changed, they listen to what people are saying. What's in black and white is, is remaining, and I'll give you credit for it, and most of y'all don't realize it, but I'm sure these two do, when they closed the Johnsville residence, the way things was being done then, and, and prior to then, and the Johnsville residence was perfect, and that's why I raised so much cane, as I did to get some, some changes made at that time, and changes were made, but anyway, we've heard Sheriff Puckett say many times about his plan, his road is not on the six-year plan, and John don't wanna bust your bubble, but until this, the projects that was already on the so-called six-year plan, they can't add more to it until those are done legally. The rustic road that we hear about this morning, VDOT has had the rustic road... VDOT has had the Rustic Road program in, for years and years and years. Johnsville residence would not use it. I mentioned the Rustic Road in, in all my cane raising. Uh, and, uh, they said, "Well, we don't use it." Why? Russell County's using it, they're using it all over the state of Virginia, why can't we use it? The, and, and as, uh, Mr. Christian pointed out, Rustic Road, uh, six fifty-three was over a million dollars, and you've done it for three hundred thousand. How many more miles of road can you get paved, folks? Uh, I applaud these, these guys, they're doing their job. If the bottom hadn't fell out of the economy nationwide, a lot of these roads would have been paved. So, uh, you're doing a good job as far as I'm concerned. And we heard that other comment here about, uh, people leaving the county and going to, uh, Tennessee. We're hearing so much about people living on gravel roads, making these roads. Think about just, just a few years, uh, the county passed a subdivision of this, where the roads in a subdivision had to be paved. Well, if people, and then we have done a wait with that requirement to, to a great extent. Uh, you, you can build subdivisions all over Scott County now, and you don't have to pave the roads. People are leaving the county, going over there where the roads are paved in subdivisions. Yeah, they're paying property to buy a house, but in my opinion, if you've got the money to build a two hundred thousand dollar house, and you can't put ten, fifteen thousand dollars in your road to get to it, then you can't afford a two hundred thousand dollar house to start with. The reason of where there's people here, we can't sell lots, sure, hey, people won't pay it, they paid across the state by it. And we, we are allowed, uh, developers to build on gravel roads in no way in the world. I'd buy a house, a lot of them on a gravel road. Me have to keep that road up the rest of my life? Wake up and smell the coffee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall.
Looks like I'm about last. I appreciate all this fellow doing, I do, it's, it's all money, and I know that. But what I was looking at, I've been here ten years just trying to get my road on a six-year plan, and I understand, I ain't nobody to nobody, and I don't expect mine to get paid before these others, but what I look at, they're moving one off every year, or two, two, three off every year. Somebody ought to be able to slide in there and get on a six-year plan if they keep moving them off. I don't mind getting on a ten-year plan, but it should be a list somewhere where we can get on there. I'm not even on the list.
Jay, isn't there another list as far as the number of roads behind those roads?
Yes, this is the list here. I think, I don't know if he's got one or not, but this is the list we're, we're pulling off of.
He's on this list, isn't he?
No.
No, none of them here?
No.
At one time, there's thirty-four projects on there that I know about, and, uh, so when the, that's zero funding, we, we took them all off, brought them back as they were, as in the...
There's still a list there.
We, uh, we have thirty-four on our list, and there's nineteen on it now.
Well, I can figure out...
Not ten on the six-year plan.
Our road is ten miles long, River Bluff Road. It's never been on a six-year plan. Fifteen years ago, they paved one mile of it, and I feel like that was political. And ten years ago, they paved a mile of that at the end of it. Never been on a six-year plan, how do you get two miles paved of it? I mean, I appreciate two miles paved, but you don't be on a six-year plan if you got two, two miles paved somewhere. And I just want on the list, don't give us ten years down the road, twelve years, it should be a, a list of, of how the roads are gonna be paved. I can't even get on the list in ten years, can't even get on the bottom of the second page. I just don't understand it.
What we do is, we take, this is the county priority list.
Okay.
Okay? And these, these are the lists, all these are where the ones, as explained, were put on this list that we call basically a waiting list, okay? Now, the list that Jackie's gone over today is our six-year plan, and so as we've been completing those, we pull off this waiting list and add to the six-year plan.
I understand it, I understand, you're on a waiting list somewhere.
But we added, and we've added, and we've added, um, what's the, the one road, did it, we added one road this year. We added six off this list last year, and we're able to add one to it this year.
How many years left on that list?
There's nineteen.
How can you get on the bottom of that list, is what my question is.
There hasn't been one road added to it since two, two thousand and four, not one.
I mean, since two thousand and four, it's been many roads paved.
Well, they were already on the list.
I know, they just weren't...
The problem, the problem is that in the late nineteen nineties and early two thousands...
There was way too many.
Supervisors, board supervisors, along with, I guess, maybe VDOT allowing it, they added forty or fifty roads. I mean, they put so many roads on there that doing one or two or three a year, there's no realistic way. And at that time, it was still called a six-year plan. But, I mean, there were so many roads.
Why?
So in two thousand and ten, they came and said, "Look, you know, we're not getting much money or any money, we're gonna have to do something with this, so let's put a list together that's truly, maybe a, close to a six-year plan." So they, they cut that forty-road list to maybe ten, but they kept the thirty that were already on there on this waiting list, and they're still working on those.
I understand.
So we're not saying that your road won't be the next one on, but it might be, you know, four or five years.
But here's my take on it.
Until we actually add it.
We don't need to add any until that list is done.
Right.
Because all it does is cause confusion down the road for somebody to say, "Well, I've been on the six-year plan for twenty-five years."
I understand that, I understand everything you're saying, I'm not on...
Well, that's what, that's what happens, that's why people get mad.
It's first come, first served on all these roads, though. And if, why can't you get on the bottom of the list? I mean, they'd be dead two years from now, that can't get, still can't get on the list, and other, other roads get on there for hours. That's all I'm looking at, is how do you get on the list?
We're not thinking of you right now.
Well, Chad will be the only one left here then.
But, but we want him to support your road in two thousand and twenty-eight, when we add that road, we want him to do it.
As I mentioned a while ago, my son's got his house for sale, and it does make a difference on a dirt road. I worked at the Easton forty years ago, he had three occasions in a year, he just fired it. One minute late is an occasion. He'd have a flat tire, go in and, uh, in late three times, I don't know if he still do that or not, but I can't complain about the rocks. Rocks ain't no harder. Get more Chinese tires, I think, it's cheaper tires, but it is a problem. And our population went from twenty-five thousand to twenty-two thousand. So it is decreasing, and that is one of the reasons. That's like, you talk about tourism, I live on a river, I'm beside the river, motorcycles won't come down through there, convertibles won't come down through there, Jeeps and no tops will come down through there, and a lotta dust, people with clean cars will come down through there. But the river roads, there's a lot of tourism, a lot of people travel those, but I just look at it two or three ways, but I ain't nobody to nobody else. I don't mind, mind, put on the book anybody, ahead of anybody, but I'd like to get it on the list sometime.
All right.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate all of that.
All right, anything else? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing on the secondary road six-year plan. We need, you all need approval?
Yes, we need you to.
All right, discussion, any, if there is any, and if there's not, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Tipton makes a motion, we approve six-year plan as presented.
I'll second it.
Mr. Compton seconds. All in favor, six, if I'm saying I have a vote?